Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, council member Leach is absent. Prula, the agenda, we have one change, seven G, you can remove that from the agenda. Is there any other changes, council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that, one change?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the July 2nd, 2025 regular meeting, all receive them in your packet. Is there any changes or clarification needed within that set of minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 2nd meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Okay, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Tim Larson out of the 107 Morningview Road, and I'm just questioning the opportunity for the city or the lack of opportunity to put a bypass or emergency route through at the end of Morningview Road to connect it, what are the plans going forward? And if there are no plans to use that land, I propose that you sell it to a citizen of the community or anybody that'd be interested in buying it.
Okay. All right, we'll take that into consideration, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council? Okay, with that, our public open forum is now closed, we have no public hearings. We will move on to reports and presentations, police department monthly report, Joe?
Good evening, mayor and council, in the packet you saw that you got the June 25 police department activity. Some of the bigger numbers on there, if you look for the month, 15 agency assists, those are all kind of spread out between Sterns, Melrose, Todd, and State Patrol. Neither, none of them were too heavy as far as one or another. 10 alarm calls, 33 medical calls, you'll see the 26 hazard calls, those are all related to the storm earlier in the month. 237 proactive patrols, 26 personal assist calls, 488 traffic stops, 16 welfare checks, 19 different suspicious calls that came into Sterns Dispatch, we got dispatched to, for a total of 1,042, which is kind of right on par with it, what I kind of figured for the summer, kind of the average there. And other news as far as, yesterday I signed the first complaint for the city, for criminal complaint for city ordinance violation for one of the properties. So the new attorney's office that we're using through Fergus Falls, they are making progress moving forward because I did sign a criminal complaint yesterday for one of the nuisance properties. Other than that, going forward, we got a busy couple of weeks coming up, Sinclair Lewis Days this weekend and a few weeks after that fair, so we'll be staffed accordingly and expecting a good turnout and things should go smooth that way. Any questions?
Okay, questions, concerns? Thank you, Joe. Public Works Monthly Report, Ben?
Good evening, mayor and council, the trail project, the trail park project, Wobegon Spur Trail is now paved from Ferry Lake Road to Highway 71. Browns Park is paved along with the Maple Street Trail, so we will be doing the edging on those trails as time allows to get that completed. The Birch Street Trail is going to be completed when the contractor is paving the south end of Birch Street. It's the same contractor that's doing the road that's also doing the trail, so it made more sense to wait until they were ready for that. Browns Park, we made the sprinkler system repairs, there were some lines that were cut when the trail was put in, so that's completed and the edging of the trail will be finished there hopefully next week. Red School House, we put the handicap ramp in, so that's installed along the building to the rear door there. Campground, cabin number two is completed and ready for rentals, it sounds like it's rented out quite a few weekends already for the remainder of the summer. We had a couple minor plumbing repairs that took place, and then with the storm there were several trees and stumps that had to be removed and cleaned up. The arena project, rubber flooring is about 90% complete in the locker rooms downstairs. The new tile is in in the showers and completed, the doors are starting to be installed, they're about 20% completed there. The roof is now completed, we do have the building rented for a week at the end of July for a resting camp, so we plan to get everything put back together next week prior to that rental. The remaining work that's going to be completed yet is window replacement, that rooftop heater replacement. The rest of the doors are going to get replaced and then we have that new entryway carpet piece, so. Things are moving along good up there, hopefully by the end of August it's completely completed. Splash pad, we have not had any down days yet, we have had to replace a few mechanical parts that failed. We had a flow meter, a couple check valves and some flow control valves, so nothing too crazy, but that's been working well overall. We did have the movie in the park on Monday, everything worked well for that. Sinclair Lewis Day's preparation kind of started last week and heavy into that this week, getting the parks and the streets ready for all the festivities there. Our street sweeper has been out cleaning up for Sinclair Lewis Days and other areas that are in need of it in town. We did have two weeks of storm cleanup at the end of June there, took place across all of our parks, we lost trees in every park that we have, and then we had several street trees that had to be taken care of as well. We still do have a bunch of trees down in our snow dump area, but those are not a priority, we'll hit those this fall before winter hits and get those out of our way for piling snow. We did a bunch of gravel road maintenance, brought in around 150 yards of class five to make some repairs to our gravel roads after all the rain. And then at the airport, we did get a water hydrant replaced out there, for one that was hit the spring from somebody that drove up into it. That's kind of the major stuff we were up to, are there any questions?
I got one question in regards to the trees in the park, I know we've lost a lot of trees, not just Sinclair Lewis Park, but a lot of them, are you, do you have a plan on replacing and replacing with similarers? How do you, how are you addressing that, just curious?
Yeah, so Andrew is our arborist and I told him during the month of August, September is a good time to plant trees, so in August we're going to come up with a plan. We'll use up our remaining budget dollars in shade tree to plant as many trees as we can to replace the ones that we have lost. So we're going to come up with an overall plan of what we need to do moving forward though because we have lost a substantial amount of trees in the last two storms.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Ambulance Department Quarterly Report, Kathy?
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm here for the second quarter report and the first half of the year report for 2025. In April, we had a total of 87 runs, which is just up from last year when we had 84, and 10 years ago was 54 in the same month. Of our 87 runs, this year 15 were no loads, five ALS transfers and 25 BLS transfers. We had medics available to respond for four of those medical calls we had, so that combined with the five ALS transfers accounted for 10.3% of our calls. Total calls that were billed out was 72 for just over $94,000. In May, we had 93 runs, and that compares to 68 from last year and 72 from 10 years ago. And of our 93 runs, 15 were no loads, five ALS transfers and 33 BLS transfers. And we had medics respond to one medical call, so that combined with the five ALS transfers accounted for 6.4% of the call volume for May. And we billed out 78 calls at just over $106,000. In June, we had 100 total runs, and that's up from 78 last year and 74 10 years ago. And of these 100 runs, 21 were no loads, six were ALS, 22 were BLS, and we had medics available for seven medical calls, so that combined with the six ALS transfers accounted for 13% of the calls. And we billed out 79 runs for a total of over $96,000. So then, just because I wasn't doing the percentages in January, February, and March, I just went back and 3.6% of our calls in January were ALS, and 20.6 in February were ALS, and 9.9% in March were ALS. We had 178 total transfers for the first half of the year, and that accounts for 34.1% of our call volume. So we go on a lot of transfers, which is why we ask for the new rig every three years because we've put so many miles on, on all these transfers that we do. The total number of runs for the year stands at 522, which is up 11.7 of an increase from last year at this point, and up 29.2% from 10 years ago. So, and you can see from the receiving facilities, cancer no loads, or cancel no loads, not cancer. I mean, we're still going on a lot of crashes that are no loads, a lot of lift assists that we go on that are no loads. Otherwise, it's just, and of course, St. Cloud Hospital's the biggest receiving facility that we go to other than Sock Center Hospital, so it's all broken down there. For public relations, special details for second quarter, April, we did ambulance standby at the Polar Plunge at the high school. In May, we did tour for the second graders at the public school. They make blankets and donate them to us every year, so we go give them a little tour, do some equipment demo with them. For May EMS week, we did rig tours for the kindergarten classes at the public school and Holy Family. That's something that we started last year, so we hope to continue that. It's good public relations, we're trying to get in the school a little bit more and let the kids know what we're doing and what we're all about. We did standby for the 5K run at the fairgrounds and Lake Wobegon Trail, that was for River of Life Church. Standby for Curd Fest at the Redhead Creamery. And mutual aid for the second quarter, we had quite a few of those, Melrose. One transfer from Melrose to Children's Hospital, six ALS transfers from Melrose to St. Cloud Hospital. We did one medical mutual aid, which we took to Melrose Hospital. Central Care EMS, we did two basic life support transfers from Long Prairie to St. Cloud. One transfer from St. Cloud to Cure Nursing Home in Sock Center for them, and a BLS transfer from Wilmer to St. Cloud. And then we did assisted Melrose mutual aid with a crash that we brought the victim to Sock Center. And then we did a structured fire standby for Melrose, which was canceled, but we were paged. We're doing some of more of the BLS transfers for Central Care because when we don't have a medic available and Melrose doesn't have a medic available, they tend to call Central Care to come in and take our ALS transfers. So that's why we try to help them out with some of their BLS transfers when they get stacked up. And then medical's taken other hospitals other than Sock Center, Long Prairie three times, Glenwood, Glacial Ridge two times, and Melrose Hospital once. Otherwise, everything's been coming to Sock Center. Any questions?
Questions, concerns? The standby for Curd Fest was, we just standing by for another one, or is that still in our territory?
That's still in our territory.
It is, okay. I thought it'd be on the raid, on the edge of Glenwood or something, or Bruton.
It's getting close to Bruton's area, but it's still ours.
Okay, all right, that's the only question I had, so. There's no other questions, then thank you.
All right, thank you.
City Engineer Update, Keith?
All right, good evening, mayor and council, well, our 2025 project continues to progress very, very well. Things are right on schedule and moving forward swiftly actually at this point. Be nice to have a little bit less rain, but with that being said, it's, it's still on schedule and not too much disruption, that always makes things a little messier for the residents when that does happen, but it usually goes away pretty quickly. Pipe work for all of what the new Phase 1, Phase 2, which basically is everything south of Fifth Street, should be done maybe as early as Friday or Monday, Tuesday, and next week, and all that will be done. Then it's just continue to work on, on street work down there. They're working on A Street right now for the grading of Eighth Street into the, into a one-way. Then it'll be turning and going down Birch, heading towards Ninth and in Ninth Street, so that's kind of where we're at with the street work. Had new curb just placed Monday on Seventh Street, those three blocks of Seventh Street were all done and waiting for that to cure out and we can think about paving again through those areas. They are working on sidewalk, you can see some of those pads on Pine Street are, are getting closer. The problem is actually, in some ways, with the pipe work's going so fast and like the curb work, it sort of makes the boulevards look bad because there's just so much of it to be done. Even though they're, they're on schedule or actually maybe a little ahead of schedule, it just sort of, there's such a volume of it, it just kind of, unfortunately, it looks bad, but they are trying to, to ramp up those activities. In fact, the contractor did bring in one crew, their own dirt crew, to start working on the street and the boulevards. Fortunately, it rained that day, but my, my understanding is they, they tend to bring back their crew and try to help progress that along, so those boulevards just start getting caught up. And once again, they're, they're on schedule, just there's, the other stuff has gone so well, it just sort of makes it look like there's a lot to be done, you know, but it's, you know, it's still on schedule, so things are going well. Once the pipe work's done, there's probably going to be maybe a couple week break in the pipe work because they're moving out this crew and they're going to be moving another crew in to finish those last four blocks, so there might be a little gap in that. But that'll allow sort of that street stuff to start to catch up a little bit, if you will, so. So just be expecting some of that, there might be a little delay in those, so don't get, don't panic, that's kind of planned for that, for that, so. We're hoping, I think week after next probably be some more curb and hopefully sidewalks starting to be placed probably week after, week after next. So that's the plan at the moment, obviously everything's a little bit weather dependent, but hopefully everything's going well, so. With that, I do have, there's a change order on your agenda item for later, I'll explain that just a little bit here. Part of it, it's all on Pine Street between Sinclair Lewis and Forest Street. The lower section, there's a little bit of storm sewer that needs to be extended, a new manhole or replaced manhole, that basically goes to the south side of the city parking lot there. Unfortunately, that was inadvertently missed in the design, so I, I don't, I don't have any excuse for it other and I just somehow missed it and it just got overlooked and it should have been in the bid, but it, it wasn't. The good news is they're all bid prices in order to do that work, that's about $8,000 for that amount. The other part is north of there, and there's a storm drain, I think it's a rooftop that comes out of the old city hall, at kind of below grade at the foundation level. Wasn't aware that it was there, so there's a dry well and that thing kind of overflows and goes into the curb and whatnot, and Ben talked about it, it's a, it's a maintenance hazard and issue for them, so they like to get rid of it. So that's the other part, is to extend an eight inch pipe up there and be able to connect directly into that drain that's coming out beyond, below the sidewalk and sort of get rid of that dry well, get rid of all that stuff and through there, so that's the rest of that, that change order. It's about 30, I think it was 33, they're about $1,000, and that's about 0.5% of the entire contract cost for your, for your understanding of that, so it's not a great amount as a percentage, but I know we don't like to have change orders, but every now and then something gets missed, but. So that's what those are for, and that's what will be on your agenda item a little bit later here, so. Other things, there is, the utility has asked us to look at, did a small design for a water main connection down on 12th Street between Fairlane, it goes about 150 feet to the, to the east from there, just across the driveway into the, into the shopping center there. There's, there's just two dead ends basically, and there's no connection, and they'd like that connection to be made so that there's a loop in through that area, so. I just gave that to the contractor for a, to get pricing for that. It's very congested utility wise in there, so that would be a, a challenge. We might be doing that by directional drilling perhaps and just digging at each end of it, so. I've asked them to price it both ways, an open cut and a directional drill, we'll see where that at, but that would be a, a utility cost for that little thing there. The other thing we'll work on is Cana Avenue, it relates and tractor trail relating to tractor supply area. We're still kind of going back and forth with developer as to what that scope might finally be, so we're, we're actually kind of a hole at the moment, kind of waiting for some decisions there before we could finalize and decide what it is we might do on that particular project, so. I think that's, I think that's about it as a whole, so, any questions for me?
Questions?
Oh, you're going to want to know about the percentage, right?
That wasn't going to be my question, but it's good to know.
Percentage of the project, probably I would say about 40% at this point, maybe even a little bit more. I haven't put together another change, not change or pay request, so see exactly dollar wise where we're at, but I would say just in terms of work, it's probably at least 40, maybe even as high as 45% thereabouts we're probably complete.
The question I did have though, is, is there a timeline when we have to have a decision made on that tractor supply road in order to get that kind of tied into this project, or?
Yeah, I mean, we've got some time yet, but I would say, because it's, it's largely designed and we've got sort of preliminary design as to, okay, if we add this, how would we do it? Won't take too long to do a final for that, but, you know, we, I would say we could get through all the way through August and probably still be able to do it. We start, if we get past, you know, up to Labor Day, that's getting, we're getting towards the end where it's, it's going to be tough to get anything done past there, so we've got another, what, six weeks to hopefully figure that out as to what's going to be done. I mean, we can always stand, fall back to, this is the original, we're just going to do this, this is going to be a city part, and we'll let it go. The problem we have is the, you come down Cana, it'd be nice, nice street, and then there's the, what's currently designed is just a connection, a tractor trail, so essentially the east little section of tractor trail, well, the rest of it, which is sort of built like, more like a driveway, is slope in different directions, not built like a road, not built the way we want it for, for a public street, so. That's the issue of dealing with them, as to how we should do that, who's going to pay for it, and, you know, there's some curb and gutter in there, we've looked at how can we save that or utilize the existing to the extent we can, actually I just did that today and gave something to Vicki, a little discussion on that. We could save a chunk of that curb just there, not all of it of the existing, but all, like all the pavement would have to go because it's warped different ways, we'd have to put a nice crown in it and whatnot. We'd probably, as at the bank, we'd probably make that instead of a, looking like a street, put more of a driveway apron there, so it's really a driveway and not a, not a street through there, so that's kind of the thoughts through there. Then there's a, you know, on the north, where there'd be east quadrant of that driveway and tractor trail, there's a storm sewer that just sort of dumps into a hole, it doesn't go anywhere. The storm is 300 feet to the south in order to get into something, that's costs a lot of money to be able to get there. So the thought would be is to put actually just like an infiltration pond there, and we could collect actually a little bit from tractor trail before it gets, goes into Walmart, but catch base on each side and dump it into the same on the north, do an infiltration little pond in that little area there in that northeast quadrant and kind of deal with it that way, so. Those are the preliminary things that we have, and we'll just have to see where it goes and, and what could happen. I know that even if we change it to a full city street kind of the way I'd like to do it, the tractor supplies entrance there will work fine in terms of flowing out like it's supposed to and whatnot. There's no real significant issues for anything they've designed on their site, just minor changes at the entrance is all, so. So it's, it's all doable, it's just a matter of getting the i's dotted and t's crossed and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Sorry, maybe long-winded for your thing, but that gives you the whole, the whole story.
Appreciate it.
I've got a question on the change order, and that's south piece of Pine Street. So it was in the feasibility report to have that, that in there? So can you help me understand how that got missed when it went out for bids, if it was in our report on February 5th?
Yeah, it was in the report, we, so I was going through the design, I think I had the preliminary design and somehow we just, it just got missed in the final design for it. These things unfortunately happen from time to time, but a fairly small thing, but we, we just didn't, didn't get it for some reason, I, I can't say, it just, we overlooked it, I had several people in my office, we even looked at it here, city staff, and somehow it got past it, we missed that piece.
Okay, so you, you redo some of the design work then before it goes out for bid from this report that we get then? You redo some of that work for what you send out then, besides the mapping we get? Do you redo some of that work before it goes out to bid, that that would have dropped out of it?
There had become a final design on it, which was just done recently, I hadn't done any final design previous to that.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? One question I got, when you do boulevards in the main project, is that black dirt that's going in there, is that black dirt that came out of that spot, or are we bringing in black dirt?
Both, we have the stuff that came out of there, as well as we have screened black dirt that's part of the topsoil for the project as well, so, so it's both.
Reason why I ask is because the last two projects we did, we ran into a problem in both projects where the grass and nothing would grow in it because instead of being black dirt, it was basically black sand, and we had a lot of problems, so I want to avert that now.
Yep, we'll look at that closely, but I do have, so there has to be that topsoil, trying to remember what I have in there, it might be five inches, I'll have to verify that, but, of, of topsoil that has to be in there, so that we do have, and then we do have it all hydromulched and hydroseeded and mulched for the whole thing, which tends to be, grow much nicer typically than just like a seeded type product.
So we'll be taking samples before it gets dumped?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there any other questions? Thank you, Keith.
All right, thank you.
Planning Commission Update, Sarah?
Good evening. At the Planning Commission at our July 8th meeting, we have two public hearings, which are action items a little later on your agenda. You do have a copy of the building permits, so the month of June, we had 11 permits issued with a total valuation of $908,000. A year ago, we had 20 permits for a total construction value of $276,000. We have the short list of the zoning permits that were issued in the month of June. And then I have a little update on some of the nuisance complaints. So as of the last meeting, I had about 14 new complaints or concerns, and of those, four letters were sent out certified mail. They were returned to me on June 26th, so it'll be 30 days, so it'll be next week when I, you know, revisit those sites. Two repeats, they were like probably in April or May, and they were taken care of and now they, they're not in compliance again, which that happens. Two were in compliance at time inspection, I have four new complaints with notices I need to send out yet, and of those 14 complaints or concerns, four of them are irrelevant, and we still have three or four of these continuous attorney's assistance.
Okay, questions, concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel Committee Report.
Just a little quick update on the Personnel Committee, they met on July 8th. Two things we're talking about right now is the next steps for the ambulance director position due to a proposed upcoming retirement, and then also we'll be conducting reviews on all the admin employees, and then we'll be looking at the future plans for the admin department. So no action items for you tonight.
Questions or concerns? Okay, then we'll move on to action items, 7A, approve appointment to park board?
So we received an application for an appointment to the park board from Alexandra Evenson. Alex served on the park board prior in 2024, but the meeting night conflicted with other obligations. Now that our meeting night has changed to Wednesday night, she's requested reappointment, so that's what's in front of you tonight, is to approve the appointment of Alexandra Evenson to the park board.
Evenson to the park board.
Questions or concerns about that? Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Sorry, Joe.
Seconded by Joe. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven B, approve resolution 2025 dash sixty granting variance to Martinson.
The Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustment, conducted a public hearing on July eighth to consider a variance from Seth and Karen Martinson. The request is for an addition to an attached garage resulting in total square footage that exceeds the ordinance allowance. The property is located at seven twenty-four Eighth Street South. The variance, if approved, would allow a nine hundred square foot addition to an existing eight hundred and square foot, eight hundred and seventy square foot attached garage resulting in a total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet, where twelve hundred square feet is allowed by ordinance. They are not requesting a variance from the maximum cumulative square feet for all accessory structures because the resulting seven, seen seventy is less than the eighteen hundred cumulative allowed. The Planning Commission established findings. They said the property after construction will be at twenty-two percent impervious coverage, which is well under the allowed impervious limit of fifty percent. No evidence has been submitted indicating that the location of the new structure will adversely affect the public health, welfare, and safety, or be detrimental and injurious to property in the neighborhood. Excuse me. The request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan by improving the housing stock. A three-stalled garage or larger is now the minimum standard for new construction additions to existing garages or detached garages. The practical difficulty was not self-created. The property was originally constructed in two thousand and six by a previous owner, and attached garages allowed use in the low and medium density residential zoning district. Other properties in the neighborhood have garages that vary from twelve hundred to twenty-one sixty square feet, and the applicant is not asking for economic considerations. They did put a couple con, conditions on the, on the recommendation. One was any additional stormwater runoff, including gutters and downspouts, shall be directed away from the neighboring property and the right-of-way. The driveway should not be greater than twenty-four feet in width at the city right-of-way line, and the applicant must stake the northeast corner of the proposed garage and then the east property lines to ensure the five-foot setback is maintained. So the Planning Commission recommends that the variance be granted, and that is in front of you by resolution two, twenty twenty-five dash sixty granting variance to Seth and Karen Martinson.
Questions, concerns? Got the map and report in here from the Planning Commission?
You can see that that, that side property line has a jog in it, and that is why they want that state, just to make sure.
There's no questions. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven C, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one granting variance to Kowski.
So this is a, a second public hearing that the Planning Commission had, acting as the Board of Adjustment on July eighth. They considered the variance request from Scott and Michelle Kowski. The request is for an addition to an attached garage resulting in sto, total square footage that exceeds the ordinance. The property is at five fifteen Lake Shore Drive. The variance, if approved, would allow a nine hundred and twelve square foot addition to ex, an existing five hundred and sixty square foot attached garage resulting in a total of one thousand four seventy-two, where twelve hundred feet is allowed. This one as well is not requesting a variance from the cumulative because they're less than the eighteen hundred allowed. The Planning Commission established findings that the property on Lake Shore is unique as that it consists of Lot One Block One and the vacated Sock Street and the hospital addition, has a portion of Lot One, was planted in nineteen thirty-two. They have a storm sewer line that's diagonally east to west across the vacated Sock Street. There's a twenty-foot storm sewer easement and a sanitary sewer line. I mean, there's all kinds of different lines that crisscross this property that make it difficult to construct other than attached to the existing garage. No evidence has been submitted indicating the location of the new structure would adversely affect the public health, welfare, and safety, or be detrimental and injurious to the property or improvement in the neighborhood. The request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The practical difficulty was not self-created. The property was originally constructed in nineteen forty-four, at which time the five hundred and sixty square foot garage was the norm. Attached garages allowed in the low and medium density zoning district, and other properties in the, in the area have varying sizes of garages, attached, detached, or a combination of both, and that the applicant is not asking for economic consideration. The conditions that were applied was any additional stormwater runoff, including gutters and downspouts, shall be directed away from the neighboring property and the street wide of way. The Planning Commission recommends that the variance be approved. This is resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one granting the variance. And this one as well, I did do a clip out of the survey to show you, the dark blue is the proposed addition to the garage, and it also, you can see the, the survey, or the storm sewer that runs across it and the sanitary.
Okay, questions, concerns? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one?
So moved.
Motion by Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any other last minute discussion or questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three in favor, none against. I consider him removed since he backed away, saying it's his property we're talking about, so. Seven D, approve change order number one, Pine Street Storm.
This is the change order that the city engineer addressed earlier tonight. This is for Pine Street, for the block between Sinclair Lewis Avenue and Fourth Street to install, or to remove storm from half of the block and then install storm for the full block and removal of that, that well that takes the roof water from the old city hall. What I'm looking for tonight is to approve that change order with Keighley Underground for that stormwater corrections to Pine Street South, thirty-three thousand and nine dollars.
Questions, concerns?
I have a question. I know this is a change order, obviously change orders are difficult, especially if it was in the feasibility study, but I also see in here that there's cost for the design. And if we missed it, or our engineer missed it, why would we pay for him to design it when it wasn't a feasibility study? Just ask.
I've asked that question already.
I feel that that's, that should be on, on the engineer.
So you're looking at line item number five?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
I guess that's something we would have to ask the engineer?
That's not designed, that's an actual structure, so that doesn't have anything to do with it.
Okay, the structure, oh, the design of the structure is forty-eight dash forty-twenty.
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's not actual design of the project.
It's not a cost.
Nothing to do with, our design.
Okay. When I first, does anybody else got anything? Otherwise, I, when I first looked at it, I was thinking, well, we'll just eliminate it and run it over ground. But then we got a city parking lot, and we got a lot of impervious there, so probably would make that intersection at Fourth and, or Pine and Fifth, a total flood down there. I don't know if it would handle it. But then also talking to Ben, he also went and reminded me that the line that is in there is clay tile. So if we go along and we pave it, and then that gives up, we're gonna have a street with a heck of a drop in it. So that changes the aspect of the whole project, too. And I did talk to Keith earlier about whether or not they were donating their engineering fees for that one block, and he never really answered me, so.
We're not really asking it exactly that way, but we certainly did. We certainly, I think we've already, we've already built for the designs.
Be included, it wouldn't be an add-on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like we said, I mean, it's never great to have change orders. I'm not thrilled by the fact we missed something that was in our feasibility, how that happens. I don't know how we rework things and drop something off, but it is what is there. Thirty-three thousand, our bid is still less than the, the second bid by a good amount there, too. So I mean, it's, if we would have paid for it, it's, it's still kind of been there, it's just, yeah, I don't get how, how things like that happen necessarily when it's, when it's there, but that's where we're at, I guess.
It's one of those things, that's the reason why I don't like change orders. I've been that way ever since I ever got on the council. If you wrote a change order, I didn't like it, because it always costs us more money.
Yep.
So if there's no other discussion, what is the council's wishes? Approve the change order? Do I have a motion to approve the change order number one with Keighley, or the opposite way around?
I'll make the motion that we approve the change order.
Okay, I got a motion by Joe.
I'll second.
And I got a second by Scott, to approve the change order. Is any other discussion, concerns?
If we don't approve the change order, then we don't address the water issue basically at the old city hall building, correct? In a sense.
Yeah.
And we don't replace that line that's there.
It's a catch twenty-two.
Yep.
But Chin, and one other question's on that, too, is since it's water coming from his roof, is it our responsibility to get it out to the street to run, go in the storm? Because we could just block it off and be done with it, and then he's got, he's gonna have a major problem. So is it up to the city to just have that cost when actually, to get the water from his roof to the storm sewer, I don't think it's our problem.
How would that water flow? How would that water flow, Keith, if we didn't do what you're proposing?
Just run down the street.
But.
Right now, it goes, it runs into the French drain.
Understood.
And then it fills up, and it overtops, and it runs down the street.
Right. It basically flows down the gutter line, there's, there is a plate, and there's a cut through there, so basically the depths of six inches of the curb, there's a gap there, if you will, where the water can come out of there and it flows down the street. We haven't got to, obviously, final assessments, so those are things that the council, if you wish to say, well, that cost is yours.
Building owner.
That, I mean, that's up to you to make those decisions, but that could be done. But yeah, I know Ben, it's, I don't know if he wants to speak about, but it's a, it's a pain for them, snow plowing and other issues is my understanding from what his description was, so it's not a situation that, that he would like to continue the way it is now, so.
Would there, I mean, if we're flowing it down the street now, then really all we're doing is removing that catch basin, in a sense, and you're piping it. But if it's flowing down the street now, was there a reason why we wouldn't let it continue to flow down the street? It's, there's no difference, other than it's going into a catch basin, and you're holding back, say, X amount of gallons before it flows down the street.
I mean, it could be kind of essentially redone, if you will, with the same, same as what it is now, essentially, and come out onto the, into the flow line of the curb. I mean, that can be done. You know, I love Ben wishes to speak to his concerns about that, but they could be done.
Because I think there could possibly be a design change to where it wouldn't affect our street department on doing their job, but he could still have his water drained out the roof, unless you guys got different ideas.
So there is two parts to this change order, just so we know, that the entire change order is not just for the roof drain.
It's a one-third, two-thirds of the, the northern part?
Yep. So right now, where it flows out of that dry well through the sidewalk, there's a metal plate on the sidewalk, which isn't ideal. It gets caught once in a while with snow removal and things like that, so getting rid of that would definitely make things better for us, safer for the public, because there's nothing fastening it right now and holding it in place. The other side is it just cleans things up, you don't have that water trickling down the gutter, making things dirty. I mean, now's our chance to put it underground if we can. I understand it's a, a lot of money to make that pipe go underground, but once the road is done, we can't go back and do it at that, at that point. We're gonna be left with this decision here.
All right.
Are you surprised you see any problems?
Not any worse than anyone else, I guess.
Any other questions, concerns? Thank you, guys. We've got a motion and a second to approve the change order for the stormwater corrections to Pine Street, and I think that includes the old city hall on that. Is there any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven E, approve contract for Stearns County Attorney, two thousand twenty-six dash two thousand, two thousand twenty-seven prosec, prosecutions.
Stearns County Attorney Janelle Kendall has submitted a renewal or extension to the contract for prosecution services. This is for criminal prosecutions for the Sock Center Police Department. The proposed rate is based upon the number of cases, the city size, the personnel, and the admin costs. You can see that her, a proposed rate for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven is thirty-eight thousand per year, and I gave you kind of some background all the way back to two thousand sixteen. We've actually been using the county for criminal prosecutions since two thousand five, I believe it was. And so they, they kind of took that over, and they do a lot of education pieces for the department as well. So what we're looking tonight is to approve the renewal of the prosecution contract with Stearns County Attorney for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven.
Questions, concerns?
I would hope that there's gotta be a point, though, where, I mean, it's going up three, four thousand dollars every renewal, so every two years.
And there was, there's a period of time, you know, they go for five years with no change, then all of a sudden we'll see a big jump, and then we wouldn't, and, and what I had talked to them before, I said I'd prefer to see a more consistent rise than a flat and then a big jump. So, but like I said, they're, they base it on everybody that they prosecute in the county, and then they divide it up based on how many calls we have versus how, how many they prosecute for us versus for others.
Under, I'm sorry, go ahead. Understanding, I mean, we, by all means, have increased our calls significant, so I mean, I can expect that those, those prices go up.
One of the things that's always been included, and I'm pretty sure that, unless I missed it in here, they've always got an attorney on call twenty-four seven. So if our guys pull somebody over and they're not certain how to go, make sure this is gonna stick, they get on the phone and call their attorney, and they tell you the step-by-step on how to take care of that, so there's no wiggle room to get out of a charge. So that's worth something, some money right there, so, in my opinion. So if there isn't any more discussion, do I have a motion to approve the renewal of the prosecution contract?
So moved.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Seven F, approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two accepting quote for SLP restroom repair.
So the storm on June twentieth, twenty forty-five caused damage to the roof of the Sinclair Lewis Park restrooms. I think you probably all noticed, the tree went down on it and took a bunch of the rafters and everything with it, so we had to close the bathroom. Because of the upcoming Sinclair Lewis days, we reached out to contractors for quotes to get the repair done prior to the event. The insurance adjuster approved moving forward immediately, so most contractors did not have availability to complete the project in this timeframe. We did get two contractors proposed a bid, we only received one bid. So that was from Steve Mort's Construction for eleven thousand five hundred, and so we're looking to approve that resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two, accepting the quote from Steve Mort's Construction.
Questions?
Do we have a timeframe when it has to be done?
Pardon me?
And the timeframe when it has to be done by?
They've actually already started working on it, and so we'll be ready for Sinclair Lewis days.
Which is today?
Well, we're, I'm looking for Friday, but.
Okay, thanks.
With the insurance company saying, yeah, let's move forward, we, we did take the liberty and, and get them to work, and they were out there yesterday.
All right.
Or Monday.
Okay, on the actual bidder price, it says eleven thousand five hundred, but on the resolution, it says eleven two fifty.
It's five hundred.
It is, okay. I will change that. I will change that. Any other questions or concerns? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2025-61.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Last-minute discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four in favor, none against. 7H, acknowledge bylaw amendment to Sock Center fire relief.
So the fire relief has submitted a request to amend its bylaws. The request is to increase the annual pension benefit by 400 per year of service. This would be an increase from $3,300 to $3,700. This is based on the relief's funding ratio of 127% at year-end. This funding ratio would be 103.01 if approved. And then I did include a copy of the request that talks about the projections and the assets that they have and the retirements they have. I'm not going to read the whole thing for you, but based on those estimates, they would still have a funding ratio of 103%. Like, if all the firemen left, they would be able to fund that. Obviously, that's not going to happen. A lot of them aren't even vested yet, as you can see by the report, but the request is to approve that or acknowledge, I guess, that a bylaw amendment for the Sock Center fire relief.
Questions? I think there's only two of us that are going to be on this.
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. I guess, you know, they've been doing this a long time. They certainly know where their fund ratios are and that track record and what the risk is, so they know far better than probably us how to go about it.
So do I have a motion to acknowledge the bylaw amendment?
So moved.
Motion by Brad. I will second it. Any last-minute things? I will call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Abstentions.
Aye.
Two in favor, none against. Two abstentions. We will now move on to unfinished business. Hotel feasibility study.
I had mentioned this in my EDA report last meeting, that the EDA was going to be seeking quotes for conducting a hotel feasibility study. The prior study was done in 2018 and '19, which was pre-COVID, so it is totally outdated. I did send a request to the CBB to consider partnering with the EDA on this project, missed their board meeting by a day, and so she hasn't been able to take that to the board. She's trying to get a handle on her budget. I did send out a request for the proposal from five firms that conduct these studies, and then we'll see what the prices come back and if we can make an arrangement with the CBB. So the EDA will have this on their meeting in August to look at further. So there's no action by the council tonight.
Okay. Local advisory committee?
So this is the Trunk Highway 71 Local Advisory Committee. As you know, I had mentioned before that we were putting together a community, committee to discuss mostly design features for the Highway 71 project. The purpose of the committee is to get somebody from maintenance, somebody from governance, someone from admin, someone from historical, someone from public safety, all of those different factions, and to get a well-rounded group of people together to provide input to MINDOT. I do need perhaps a council member on that, and so I'll need one of you maybe to step up and take that role. I do have someone from the public utility as well, so we are trying to get people based on what they can bring to the table, I guess is what you would say. But I have had pretty good interest in people reaching out to me. I think we'll put together a really good committee, and hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to get something set up with MINDOT to kind of task everybody with what the expectation is, so.
Okay.
If one of you wants to step up and be the one, what will be included in that is there'll be some meetings, several of them will probably be teams meetings, or there might be times where you might be asked to go out to another community and look at what they've done, and see what, and then also, there would be, you know, times where we would do outreach to the public. And there may be a meeting here, we may be set up at the farmer's market, we may be at something like that, where we'd be able to be a point of contact to explain how this is hopefully going to look. And so this will be something, this group will be early on doing a lot of the design, and then once when they're working, and then once when they get the design put together, get back together again to do the public outreach part of it. So that's kind of where we're at with that. If one of you want to get back to me now, or in the coming week, that would be great.
So with this, you want them to reach out to you, or are you looking for, like, some recommendations from the council for maybe good applicants or interested parties?
To reach out to me.
Have them reach out to you? Okay.
Okay.
And you guys can arm wrestle for it.
I didn't know if PUC got back to you that quick. I only gave them the notice last night, so.
I talked to them today. I talked to them today, yeah.
All right. Sounds good. And if anyone's interested, talk to Vicki.
I'd be willing to do it, so.
I'd be interested as well. Looks like we might have all council, all four of us are. Okay. Trunk Highway 71 feasibility study.
Well, this is not the feasibility of the design, Drew. This is because Highway 71 is going to involve possibly 429 proceedings for the city, which is special assessments, that we have to go through that process as well. So we're going to have the design with MINDOT happening and the whole sales tax part happening, but then on this side, we're going to have the 429 proceedings, meaning the feasibility, the public hearing on improvement, and all of that part that has to happen. So I'm just kind of setting you up that this is the direction that we're going to go. So I'm thinking that at the next council meeting, we'll probably ask the city to, ask the city engineer to begin that design process and to start that feasibility study. You know, we always ask them to do a feasibility study. Comes back in a few months with the report. This one's going to take longer because of the involvement with MINDOT. We may have an August start, and we may not see that feasibility study till winter sometime, maybe February, about that. That's when you'll get that actual full report, and then at that point, we would call a public hearing. So just kind of, you guys thinking about that, how that's going to work and how we're going to structure that, but in your minds, be thinking at the next meeting, we'll probably do that official engagement of the city engineer to start working on it, and then also to task him with that feasibility study.
Okay. Any questions more about that?
Is there, is there, is there a reason or maybe consideration that we would look at outsourcing this feasibility study rather than using our city engineer? It's a long project. It's a big project. It's, is there any advantage to doing so?
As far as having, I guess I don't know how I would do that, because it's the engineering, it's the design work that's involved with all the existing utilities and what needs to be upgraded, so then we would have to have our existing city attorney give out all of the information to somebody new. So I, I guess I haven't really thought that one through. Something we can give consideration between now and August 6th.
For me, it's, it's, I understand where you're coming from, but I think our city engineer, other than this one thing on Pine Street, knows the city well enough to be able to get the answers for this study quicker than someone else coming in and not knowing anything about us, so.
All right. I'm just posing the question.
Yep. That's fine. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Okay. Then we will go on to our consent agenda. We have scheduled claims, unpaid claims of $356,506.54, paid claims of $10,000, total for $366,506.54. We had June checks, paid claim slash payroll of $1,129,411.19. We have a gambling application for exempt permit requests from Honkens and Monkeys Nursery School for a raffle for October 26, 2025, at the Hoy family school. Is there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Brad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any last-minute discussion? Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Informational items?
A few informational items. We did get our April 2024 population estimate from the State Demographer. Our official population is now 4,657. I did dispute it, and I lost, because my dispute was up at the home school, because they are counted in our population, that I looked at the census blocks, and they had zero population there. And I know that there's 95 permitted lodging units, and so when I submitted that, they said, that's all great, but this is 2025. You have to take that next year. So that's kind of where we're at. I gave it a shot, but I didn't win. So the other thing, the hazardous waste pickup for, like, the paints and solvents one is on August 20th at the Civic Arena. I do have your spectrum channel lineup changes. I did put in your packet some emergency alert signup info. It has to do with storms in Stearns County. It's a QR code, and, or you can log in, and you can get the code and the emergency alerts on your phone for Stearns County-specific. And then also, the Stearns County Five-Year Road Capital Improvement Plan. You kind of see where they're, where they're going in the future as far as what roads are going to see work. Near us, we see some on 17, and I think it's going to see some work out a few years. Other than that, not a whole lot around this area as far as the county is concerned.
Okay. Any questions about any of the informational items? Hearing nothing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Joe, got it. Seconded by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Motion carries four in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.